Call this meeting order. Tonight, we're going to be leading the pledge by the Smyrna softball team.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight, in our moment of silence, I would like to, for everybody to remember the family of Mitchell Maxwell, the Riverdale graduate that just passed away a couple of weeks ago. So, in your thoughts, if you can just remember them. Thank you. Approve or agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Blair, second by Mr. Tackett. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Tonight, we've got a special presentation that I'm going to turn over to Mr. Oldham right now. Let him do the honors.
Okay. We do, we have a recognition of a graduation this evening. I'm going to read this, so I don't leave anything out, and then we'll make a diploma presentation. This is an honorary diploma for PFC Jerry D. Brown Senior, World War II veteran. It's never too late to fulfill the dream of receiving a high school diploma. Tennessee code provides World War I, World War II, Korean War, and Vietnam War veterans whose education was interrupted by their service to our country with a high school diploma. When duty called, Mr. Jerry D. Brown Senior stepped forward and never had the opportunity to finish high school. He put his community first by trading in his educational opportunities for an M1 rifle and became a mortar gunner in Company A, 34th Infantry. His unit was deployed to the Asiatic Pacific Theater. During his World War II service in the Pacific Theater, Mr. Brown received the Asiatic Pacific Theater ribbon, victory medal, good conduct medal, and Army of Occupation Medal in Japan. It's been my great honor this evening to present Mr. Jerry D. Brown Senior with his honorary high school diploma. Mr. Brown, if you will step up, I would like to make this presentation.
I also will read what the diploma says. This is a State of Tennessee Department of Education. This is to certify that Jerry D. Brown satisfied the partial requirements for graduation from high school after his trip by the Tennessee State Board of Education, spring of 1944, at Central High School, Rutherford County, Mupsville, Tennessee, and is therefore awarded this World War II veteran honorary diploma. In testimony whereof and by authority enough, best we have affixed our signatures, this the 25th of June, 2013, is signed by Commissioner Huffman, Commissioner of Education, myself as Director of School, Mr. Ha, as Chairman of Rutherford County School Board, Mr. John Ash, the Principal of Central American Student. Congratulations, Mr. Brown, and thank you for your service. It's an honor to present this to you, Jerry.
Thank you. That's really an honor, isn't it, to be able to do that and we could participate? Thank you.
Thank you. Number six, approve or consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Holliday and a second by Ms. Blankenship. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number seven, visitors. I believe tonight, we've got one visitor with us, Ms. Melissa Yancey. Ms. Yancey here? If you want to come forward. We try to generally keep it to right around three minutes, and you might see the lights start to flash and all that stuff, so if Ms. Marshall asks you, or gives you a time signal, if you would, just wind it up.
Okay.
Thank you.
I appreciate that you came. This will be my first board meeting. I hope it won't be my last, but I've got some questions that I'm concerned about. I'm a grandmother. I also, of course, pay taxes in this county, so I've got some important questions that I need to ask so that answered, so I'll know where I stand, okay? First of all, has the dress code changed concerning the head coverings for students? And if so, why? Are there rooms being made for the Muslims to pray in? If so, why? The books that our young people have to study is critical to the part of our children learning how America, what America stands for. So I'm concerned about the books that are being positioned in our young people's hands. If books are, if prayer was taken out, I was there when prayer was taken out of school. I saw a big change in things. I have met a young gentleman that, well, I'll say young is not young now, but for, he started school as a Buddhist. He prayed, said the pledge every day, became a citizen at 11. He graduated high school, still is Buddhist, but he said when prayer was taken out, he saw a drastic difference in the student body. So prayer was taken out of school, that, and we're talking Christian prayer. Number two, as a Christian, I don't understand why that would ever have been a policy to take that, but it was. So here's my question. I have seen books come into our school system when evolution was chosen. I was embarrassed over it as a child. I remember seeing it. I saw things change when segregation started. I saw a big change when books okayed queers and lesbians. I have seen changes in books that changed lives. This is my concern. If books today are teaching children it's okay to be one religion over another, you're wrong, and that should never be in there, never. Number one, the Congressional Congress of this United States started with prayer. There was not a debate on what the prayer would be, or if it'd be a prayer, and we're talking Christian prayer. The debate was over who has the right to say. That's our founding fathers. We have not changed as a nation. We have become more educated, but I don't think that's been a plus. So I would like the board to answer some of the questions I've asked. I would also let you know, I appreciate you listening. Thank you.
Can I address the, I'm happy to address the board.
Go ahead.
You know, board members, I'm Jeff Free, the board attorney, but I know there's been several people last few meetings we've had, it kind of raised questions regarding textbooks and religion in school, so I thought I might just take a minute to kind of tell everyone kind of the legal requirements that school systems require to operate under. Some of those you may already have been familiar with and heard before, but as many of you already know, to a large extent, the Supreme Court of the United States tells us what the law is for the country with respect to religion and what can be taught and how it can be addressed in the school system. And as a public school system, which we are a public school system, there are requirements that we have to honor under the Constitution. And obviously, the Constitution can be interpreted different ways, but you have to look at what the Supreme Court has done thus far with respect to religion in school, what they have allowed and disallowed. As you know, a lot of people said prayer has been taken out of school. And certainly, it's different today than it was when I did public school systems based on what decisions have been made under the Supreme Court. But as a public school system, what our charge is and what our requirement is, is to teach, well, to treat all religions in a neutral manner. The school system and the public school system cannot advocate one religion over another. It can't promote one religion over another. The school system can't even practice religion in a school system under the laws that govern the public school system. So it's with those requirements that we have to kind of encroach upon these issues that impact upon some religions and world religions in the classroom. Because as you know, as many of you will know, world religion is part of the curriculum that's been adopted by the Department of Education, and it's an item that we're required to teach in the school system. Now, to deal with that in the school system, the school system has to be careful to deal with that purely in academic sense. We teach it only as an academic subject, like this religion's out there, this is what it's about, but you have to be careful. You cannot advocate that religion, you cannot promote that religion, you cannot practice that religion. So it's a very narrow scope in which the school system is allowed to deal with that subject, and it's basically just telling people it's out there, this religion's there. But it's a very sensitive issue. It's been, obviously, because it's raised, we have a number of people speak on this issue here over the last few months on it, and we understand it's close to a lot of people's hearts, and they feel very strongly about the issue, and we understand that. But to kind of address a couple of things that the school system's already done, to make sure that our personnel and staff are very attuned and aware of people's rights under the First Amendment and the restrictions that we have to operate under as a school system under the First Amendment. We had a training session for principals back in June, had a very well-known First Amendment expert come in and tell our principals kind of what was allowed and not allowed under current First Amendment interpretation by the Supreme Court of the U.S. So we've done that already, but that's not the only thing we're doing. Beyond that, this fall, when our new staff gets back into school, we're making a thicker emphasis to make sure that people are very sensitive to the issue, that they cannot promote or advocate any particular religion in the school. And you may even have a religion that's, such as Islam, that may be considered to be a minority religion in the school, but still, you cannot take anything and give them any special rights, privileges beyond any other religion. The scope of the school system is always to deal with these religions in a neutral manner, and that's a charge in which we have to manage, handle those things, and treat all those equally. And that's what we have to do as a public school system. The other thing which the school system's planning on doing is, in this fall, they're going to be looking at the scope and sequence of that sixth grade world religion class to have it reevaluated and redone to make sure all religions are treated equally and handled in a neutral manner. So towards that end, we're going to be particularly making a note that our teachers should not be going to the internet and getting outside information on their own, bringing outside material into the classroom that has not been vetted by the central office and the school system, because that opens it up to, we may not know exactly what's been taught in the school system, but that happens. So we're doing, we're going to make a particular emphasis to make sure outside materials are not brought into those classes, and we're strictly, stated for our very narrow scope of our world religion instruction. So we think that will hopefully address some of the issues that have been raised and some of the concerns that we have heard voiced for the last few meetings, and those are concrete steps that we're taking to try to respond to those issues that have been presented to us. Beyond that, I would say with that world religion textbook that's been issued, that's coming near the end of its rotation, but they rotate out every few years, that under the normal circumstances, they have one more year in life cycle, and then it will be rotated out, and the state will be adopting new standards and new things that we have to do with respect to world religion here in the upcoming year. Now, if that happens, there's been a draft saying that world religion may not be taught until the seventh grade under the new state guidelines. We don't know that at the school system yet, because those are not finalized by the state. But to the extent that anyone has an issue with respect to curriculum and what's being taught in our schools, that really is initiated at the state level, because it comes down from the state to us, and to the state who have issues with that, or anyone has concerns with it, it really should be addressed. There's a state textbook commission that some of you are aware of, that's a good one of the beginning. We talk to them, because they are actually the body to adopt textbooks for the state and approve them, and then just the State Department of Education, because they have to approve what the textbook commission has approved, and look at that. So for those people who have questions about thicker textbooks and particular subjects and what they, if they feel like a subject's not being covered sufficiently, or if it's not given enough time, then I, we would encourage you to go to the state and talk to the people at the state level, to voice your concerns, because they won't be aware of them unless you talk to them about them and ask them to address the matters that you have issues about. What they're due, we don't know, but that's really the point of your initial contact, to have those matters addressed, because once the textbooks and subject matters are adopted at the state, we, the Board of Education here has limited option of what it can do. So it has to deal with what the state has mandated, and what we have to teach in schools, and what our students may be tested on, because it would be unfair for our own students across the board in the school system to not be exposed to the subject matters for which they may be expected to know on tests and subject matters. So that's something that we have to keep in mind to the school system, and hopefully we'll try to do a good job of in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Free. I guess, any board members have any questions for Mr. Free? Thanks, thanks again, Mr. Free. Number eight, Mr. Oldham.
I'm pleased this evening to introduce two of our new principals, and if you would stand, I want to call your name. The first one is Dr. Sherri King, who is the Principal of Homer Pitterd Campus School, Dr. King. Thank you. And our most recent one, actually within this week, Kim Edwards, is the new principal of Oakland Middle School. Both of these ladies will do a great job. I've known them for a while, I'm very pleased to turn the reins over to them. I think the parents will be also. Thank you.
Thank you. Number nine, I've got some special recognition tonight, so I'm going to turn that over to you, Ms. Blair.
Okay. This is some of the fun things we do. I'm going to ask Mr. Rick Powell, you may want to step up to the microphone, and if you choose to introduce your coaches, or how you would like to do this along with the girls, for the Smyrna High School Girls softball team, who is the Tennessee State Champions this year.
I would like to thank the board for this opportunity to recognize our softball team and our coaches. They did a kind of very successful year, very exciting, and we are, we are really pleased with the outcome of this season. They've worked hard and came through some adversity and overcome some past issues that we haven't, haven't had that much success with, so they did a really good job, and we're really proud of them. Our coaches, head coaches, Luke Shepherd, assistant head coach, Sean Milton, and then we'll introduce the girls that are represented here today. I'm going to introduce these young ladies here. We have several girls that are out, and this is kind of the busy season for softball season, we've got a lot of girls traveling tournaments. Several of our girls are at the Atlanta Legacy, which is one of the biggest tournaments in the United States. But starting with this end, we have sophomore Zoe Ward.
Do we have them come over to our list?
Sure.
Her name again?
Zoe Ward. And then next, we have Mackenzie Davis. And sophomore Emily Boone. Freshman Taylor French. Junior Shailen Richardson. Junior Kelsey Russell. Junior Talia Beating. Junior Kayla Tomlin. And senior Taylor Randolph. And recently graduated Abby Bowyer. Last year, we had about 24 girls, so we have quite a few out right now. But these young ladies were pleased to be here and excited for this recognition. We appreciate all the support that we've received this year, this season. Just a couple of things, real quick, little history lesson, about as we were 40 and 10 this year, as recent as two years ago, we won 10 games. We had nine academic All-Americans. Our pitcher, Mackenzie Prince, was named Gatorade Player of the Year for the State of Tennessee. She's the only one ever named out of this district, out of Rutherford County, as softball to be named as Gatorade Player of the Year. She's also listed as the Tennessean Pitcher of the Year and the DNJ Pitcher of the Year. And we've had some good success with her, and there are several other young ladies that had awesome seasons as well, so we appreciate everything you guys have done for us, and thank you very much.
Ladies, you'll be able to see yourself on TV in the morning.
I heard freshman, sophomore, junior in there, I'll tell you.
Coach Shepherd, on behalf of the board, I'd also like to say congratulations, and based on, oh, it sounds like you've got a lot of sophomores, juniors, and so we may see you back here again next year, hopefully. We appreciate it. Number 10, Mr. Oldham.
Number 10. Board member Aaron Holliday asked that after the testing season was over for our, to make a presentation about what's involved in test integrity across Tennessee, what are kind of some of the requirements? So I asked our test coordinator this year, Ms. Ann McCraw, to make a presentation. She's actually going to go part-time with us, and the gentleman that's kind of going to be replacing her next year, I guess you're here for moral support tonight, is Mr. Josh Kubley back there, so Ms. McCraw?
Thank you. I am really not the testing coordinator anymore, Josh is, but he is here for moral support for me. But I want to talk about the mandated assessment protocols, the security protocols that the state requires of us, and you can see my subtitle is the importance of having really good BTCs, which stands for Building Testing Coordinators. And I will mention that the two new principals we met were building testing coordinators last year, and so Josh will be now two really fine building level coordinators when he starts school this year. But the state requires us to have certain standards in place. There's a law, 49 NAST 1, day 607, that says essentially, you have to do what we tell you to do with regard to the administration of any TCAP test. And if you don't, grounds for immediate suspension, dismissal, and revocation of your license. Overall, in our system, since I've been doing this job, which has been 10 years, I think we've had three dismissals. And I really don't know about the revocation of the license that happens in another level, but we are required to immediately investigate, we're required to train anybody who handles any test materials. So everyone, we train the system level, the building level people, the building test coordinators, and then they go back and train in their schools. So everyone signs this form, acknowledgement of the test screen policy, which is the TCA in detail. They all understand, you know, they sign that they understand that, they're willing to follow that, and then that form is kept on file in their building in case there's an issue later. The Tennessee Comprehensive Assessment Program, when people talk about TCAP, it's really more than just a single test that we do in the spring. So we have all of these assessments. We have achievement tests, we have SAT 10, which is next year, just going to be second grade. We have writing assessments, we just finished that for the first time this year online at grades eight and 11. We have constructive response, this year will be three through eight, and algebra and geometry at the high school level. We have end of course for algebra 1 and 2, English 1, 2 and 3, biology, chemistry, and history. And then as part of the E-Pass, we have Explore for eighth grade plan for 10th grade, and then ACT for grade 11. And then we also have portfolio assessments for eligible students, and ELSA for eligible ESL students. I've included in your packet that I think Chris put in your Dropbox, the test schedule for next year, just so you can see that it's getting pretty much to the place where we don't have a month when we're not testing something. So we talk a lot to our building test coordinators about inventory of the materials, being sure the test areas are ready, they have to cover things up, and even in lower grades, you have to think about things like covering up rugs, because teachers might have those in their floors and have ABCs in it. We have to work a lot on communication devices like iPods, iPads, cell phones. No one can have those, not students, not teachers. We work a lot on, don't talk about what you see on this test. If you happen to be a reader for a test, you have to immediately forget what you've read after you administer the test. There are tons of standardized procedures. They have TAMS that everyone uses in every school building, and kind of the guiding principle is U-CAN system. These assessments are supposed to be all about what each student knows about each assessed content. And then also, we have to be sure that most of the students, any ESL students, get the appropriate accommodations that the state requires us to give them. If something goes wrong, that's the procedure that we have to follow, that, again, that's from a test administration manual, but that's the procedure that we have to go through if anybody even suspects that something might have happened that was outside the standard, standardized testing procedures. And then sometimes, across the state of Tennessee, but not here, there have been issues with time limits that weren't followed, didn't keep up with the books, apparently someplace students were left unsupervised, that certainly didn't happen here, and then there have been cases where teachers may have told their kids their answers weren't correct, or they talked about the test items after the test, and apparently, in one system, a humbly student kept the book overnight. So none of those things have happened here. We've worked really hard to cover eventualities, and I guess kind of my bottom line, and if you ask King or, no, Kim or Dr. King, they would say our, our bottom line is, as long as you don't cheat, we can fix things. So they worry a lot about what happens if a kid gets his book and somebody else's answer book, and we can fix all those things, but we can't instead if they cheat, and they know that. So it's, it just doesn't happen. Excuse me. Another thing that, I don't know if everybody is aware, but the state pays Pearson, who is our test printer, quite a bit of money to do an erasure analysis. So I know y'all are familiar with problems down in Georgia that happened because of teachers changing answers. So there is an erasure analysis in place for Tennessee schools, so we've never been contacted about that, so I'm assuming that everything went well. In Rutherford County, we work really hard to train all of our building level coordinators. They're trained in the fall, and then they're trained again as each assessment comes. One thing that we've done since I've been testing coordinator is to have an administrator assigned to the role of test, building level testing coordinator. They always have someone else to help them, but we found it a better practice to have an administrator handle issues with possible breaches than to say have a guidance counselor. So that's been a change. Everybody who handles any test material, that includes prosecutors or test administrators, excuse me, reads and signs the Code of Ethics. We created that, a testing Code of Ethics, we created that here, and that also is in Dropbox. Excuse me, we have dismissed three teachers in the last 10 years over breaches of security, and everybody knows that that happened, so they're very aware of it. So our problems have been small and not difficult to address. So, excuse me. As I said, in your Dropbox is a schedule for next year, you have the testing Code of Ethics, and then you have a copy of that. You have the testing Code of Ethics, and then you have a copy of that flow chart. And just as a note, last year, we gave over 67,000 assessments with no breach. Any questions?
Blair?
Does Pearson, do they provide all the testing materials?
Yes, they do.
For all those that you listed?
Well, Pearson or Measurement Inc. Measurement Inc. is the writing and the constructive response.
And do they also grade, or is that?
They grade.
They grade? What is the normal turnaround time?
Well, probably a month or so on achievement. We test the, well, the end of April, and we get quick scores back before school is up.
Ms. Holiday, do you have a question?
I thought it was important that we not take this measure for granted. When testing kind of came in, in the spring this year, I went to Mr. Odom and expressed to him my interest in the wake of news reports in Georgia, Pennsylvania, California, Ohio, et cetera, of testing, cheating, that had risen to the level of convictions, admissions, and even jail sentences. I just felt like it was important that we highlight to the community that the outstanding scores that they're seeing in Rutherford County are authentic.
Yes, they are.
And the outstanding performance that's happening here is because of the integrity, not just of our school system and our administrators and our faculty, but also our students. I remembered the words of Donald Jernigan when he was here on the board. He felt that it was important that, among other things, that we taught character. And I think that this program right here is one of the things that we do to say to the students, integrity and character is important, and we're going to do it the right way. We're going to achieve great things, but we're going to do it the right way. And I applaud Ms. McCraw, Mr. Odom, for the outstanding performance, the track record, and for the report this evening. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Mr. Kubley has some big shoes to fill, doesn't he?
Yes, sir. Number 11.
Number 11 is a lease a portion of Kitterell School property. In 2007, the board leased a portion of the Kitterell School property to John Mark Brandon in exchange for Mr. Brandon keeping it in mode and maintained. The lease automatically renewed each year up to a maximum of five years. The prior lease is attached. Mr. Brandon would like to renew the lease on the same terms. Attached is a proposed new lease prepared by Board Attorney Jeffrey. The lease is for a one-year term that automatically renews up to a maximum of five years. The lease allows either party to terminate upon 30 days' advance notice to the other party. Recommend approval. Motion to approve the new lease with John Mark Brandon for a portion of the Kitterell School property as presented.
Second.
Got a motion by Ms. Blankenship, and a second by Mr. Holiday. Anybody got any comments? I just mentioned that, I think Mr. Carter may have mentioned the other night that a very good job's being done in keeping everything up out there. So a whole lot bearing what it was, I guess. All in favor of motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number 12.
Number 12, 12A, is the Blackman Elementary Playground. Principal Cynthia Ford has asked permission to install playground equipment that she purchased with funds raised by the Blackman Elementary PTO to upgrade the existing third-grade playground. The equipment is valued at approximately $20,000. The installation will be funded by the school. The playground in its entirety will be funded at no cost to the Rutherford County School Board. Recommend approval. Motion to approve installation of a third-grade playground upgrade at Blackman Elementary School as presented at no cost to the board.
So moved.
We've got a motion by Mr. Blair, and a second by Mr. Niffler. Any further comments on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. B.
B is Riverdale High School Baseball Locker Room. Principal Tom Nolan has requested permission to build a new locker room for the baseball program. They are currently using space in the existing weight room. The boys' locker will be in the new building, and the existing locker room will be used for more weight room area. The proposed building will be a 30-foot by 50-feet pre-engineered metal building on a monolithic concrete slab. It will be constructed adjacent to the existing building. Mr. Nolan and his building team will be responsible for all permits and all requirements pertinent by state and local code. The approximate cost for the building is $35,000. A donor has donated $20,000, and the balance will be paid by the baseball booster club at no cost to Rutherford County School Board. There is no gender equity issue, since the softball team has locker rooms and currently uses the weight room and will have access to the new area in the existing building. Recommend approval. Motion to approve construction of a 30-by-50 engineered baseball building at Riverdale High School as presented at no cost to the board.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Niffler, and a second by Mr. Young. Any further comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number 13, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Evans.
Okay, tonight, we have one zone exemption appeal. We had one turned in today as well, though it'll be on the next board agenda. So that gives us a total of four for the year. Is Ms. Johnson? Come on up, Ms. Johnson. Ms. McCraw is going to swear you in.
I'm trying, please. You swear upon the testimony, you're about to give me the truth, the whole truth, and then the truth, and then the truth of the perjury. Yes.
Okay. I'll give a brief overview, and then, Ms. Johnson, you're welcome to speak to the board and tell them your reasons. Ms. Johnson is requesting a zone exemption for her child to attend kindergarten at Blackman Elementary School instead of Rockville Elementary School. The zone exemption request was denied because Blackman Elementary School is at capacity and cannot accept zone exemptions pursuant to school board policy. In addition, the school board had to rezone approximately 25 existing students from the school to attend Brown's Chapel Elementary School for the 2013-2014 school year.
I want to thank you all for this opportunity today, and I do have some information I would like to pass out if I can. I am here to appeal today and let you know my concerns as a parent for my child's education. I want to address my concerns as to the difference in education between Blackman Elementary School and Rockville Elementary School. I am very involved in my child's education, and when I sat down to compare the two schools, there are very definite distinctions between the two. I pulled the math evaluation composite score and reading scores for both schools and compared the grades. My main concern is the overall achievement scores as a school, the TCAP testing score average, and the evaluation composite scores. If you compare the first two pages and compare the schools, the fourth and fifth grade progress for math TCAP, the overall growth measure by the fifth grade at Blackman Elementary is substantially more growth than at Rockville Elementary. If you look at Rockville's fifth-grade scores, they made substantially less progress than standard academic growth. Also, if you look at the 2012 achievements scores between the two schools, you will see Blackman Elementary achieved almost 10% higher than Rockville Elementary. Blackman Elementary also made more progress in achievement from 2009 to 2012. If you turn to the next two pages and compare the schools, I printed the evaluation composite score, which is the total scores from math, reading, language, science, and social studies. For both schools, overall, Blackman scored higher in each yearly estimate. The academic programs provided at Blackman Elementary are: Accelerated Reader Program, English as a Second Language, and Hands-on Science. The clubs available for students to join at Blackman are: R Club, Beta, Beta Club, Chorus, Orh, Math Club, SWAT, Science Club, Student Council, Technology Club, Yearbook Club, Athletic Club. The activities that they provide at Rockville are archery, choir, and scouts. I have also continued to hear how well-known Rockville Elementary's special education program is. My child doesn't benefit from any of the special education programs provided. These are real scores in comparisons that reflect the quality of education that is given at each school. Just by looking at these scores, it would not be easy to take a step down in education. If my child were being rezoned to a school that the quality of education was just as good as Blackman or better, I would not have much to say today. We all continually set goals and move forward in everything we do, and I set standards of education for my son as far as his education, what he will receive. Tennessee has adopted the Common Core state standards to prepare students with the most important knowledge and skills to attain higher education and careers and compete in an increasingly competitive work environment. These standards will emphasize critical thinking, problem-solving, and creativity. I look for these values and how they are implemented in any school program. I think any parent concerned about their child's education will want to put their child in a program that is excelling. I'm not looking for a certain class, a sports program, or have any transportation issues. I want to provide a good quality education for my son by placing him at Blackman Elementary, which would definitely be a step forward. And I just thank you all for hearing my heart today.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. I think what I'm going to do, if Mr. Odom would want to address some of the concerns.
We have the 2012, we don't have the 2013 yet, so they haven't posted all of that particular information. It's somewhat difficult to compare an achievement, a direct achievement, because that'll vary widely over the district. Because, for example, you might go into a school that's a high-poverty school where the average achievement might be 40%, and you might go a few miles down the road to a school because of the demographics and other changes, that the average achievement might be 60. That's not necessarily a direct influence of that school in that. Some of the influence of the school would be some of the information, which is on pages three and four. I do notice that both schools are Level 5, which is the highest level that the state gives for that. I do see a little bit higher at Blackman Elementary in a one-year index of 8.83, a positive 6.80 index at Rockville. But again, both of those fall in the range that Tennessee, if you look at the definition of bottom level 5, is most effective. Schools whose students are making substantially more progress than the state growth standard or the state average. And so in both cases, both of these schools are making substantially more progress than would be in a typical school in the state of Tennessee.
Mr. Blair?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to deny the appeal, but during the discussion period, I'd like to, I'd like to comment.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Blair, and a second by Mr. Holiday.
Ms. Johnson, we would like for every family and every child in this county to go to school where they would like to go to school. But we have crowding issues throughout the county. Blackman Elementary is packed. It is, it's like a sardine camp. Again, we just moved two dozen students out that were fairly close to that campus because it is so crowded. What I do know, as a parent, although my children are grown and graduated from high school and college, what I do know is that your influence is what will impact the success of your child. And with your mentality towards that success, your child is going to be successful at Rockville. I am confident of that because you, your child is responsible to you and are accountable to you. So I am very confident that your child will do well in that curriculum.
Mr. Tucker?
Mr. Odom addressed something that I wanted to make sure was asked, is where does Rockville stack up as far as? We're proud of the fact that all of our schools are really good schools, but you've addressed the fact they're one of the, at the highest level that the state can do. We want every child to be in a position to be successful. I know this for sure, that it's the one-on-one relationship that your student will have with the teacher that's there. I'm confident Rockville has excellent teachers in each grade level. And Mr. Blair said it exactly right. If the parent chooses to fit in and make that triangle work, then the child can be successful, certainly at Rockville School. I know that there are highly, high achievers at Rockville, and I'm sure there's lots of parents that would suggest to you that they're very proud of Rockville School, and we'll welcome you into that. But, you know, like Mr. Blair indicated, it would be wonderful if we could just pick everybody to go. But I just can't support that situation where it's got. But I appreciate your passion for your child, and if you'll continue that, I too have every confidence that he can be successful at Rockville.
I do have one more question. Do you know what they'll do with the margin of children who are not ready for kindergarten? How do you calculate that, and who fills those places? Because all the kids that are going won't be ready for school.
If they are five years of age with the new requirement issued, of course, they moved it back this year a month. If they're that age, we'll have to take them in public school. Now, we do offer, in some schools, we have a developmental kindergarten program, which is offered to parents. They can choose it or not choose it. If we, when we do the screening, every student receives a screening by entering kindergarten. So if your child in the screening, they will come to you if they think that your child is maybe not ready and offer you this developmental kindergarten program, which would, basically puts them in kindergarten for two years. Nothing magic happens at age five. For some kids, it happens at four, and for some students, it happens at six. I mean, that's developmental with students. But when they do that assessment, they'll tell you that. But if you're five years of age and meet the state requirement, you enter school.
Well, my child is more than ready for school. That's not the question. Some kids that are entering kindergarten, within that week or two, the teachers will know whether they are ready or not. So when you move those children back, what do you do with those slots?
We'll not move anybody back unless they talk to the parent, and we have available slots in this developmental kindergarten program. But there's nothing automatic that after testing that you go back. I mean, we, as a public school, when they're that age, we offer the kindergarten program. But if a parent feels development, the teacher does a testing, the parent feels developmentally, they concur with that, then we have a few, and I'm not sure exactly how many developmental we have at each of those two schools. There's about 15 for the whole county.
I think there's 17.
17, is it?
Okay. We have a maximum number of 15, but there's still kindergarten students.
They are.
All public kindergarten, and the teachers are still kindergarten teachers. There is just a smaller pupil teacher ratio than the standard kindergarten classroom. Those students receive a slightly different curriculum, and they're preparing in the fourth kindergarten model year. But that screening is typically, 99% of that screening is typically completed before they ever enter. I would venture a guess, and this is a district's estimate, but I'd say there's less than five students across the county, and we have 40,000 students here, that would be entering kindergarten that would move after school starts. All of that's taken care of before we ever enter the first day of class. That screening takes place a week, a few days before kindergarten starts. That screening takes place a week, a few days before kindergarten starts.
So once you do that screening, you know, saying there's got, you still have some spaces available, once you do the screening and find out the results.
Mr. Zagor, Ms. Johnson had asked me this question before the appeal and I think what she's asking is, I think she thinks that if students are put into the developmental kindergarten program, the kindergarten readiness program, that it's freeing up slots in traditional kindergarten programs. It doesn't, they just rebalance which classrooms would be developmental pay and which ones would be traditional kindergarten. It does not open up any spaces.
Those teachers, all kindergarten teachers, it is a kindergarten classroom. It is not, those students are still in that building and those classes are just small classes, but they will be basically what I'd call sports rooms. There's red shirts that will be held back from kindergarten traditionally.
So with the new program that they're coming up with, the pre-kindergarten readiness, are those students already included in the number or are these extra students that you'll be adding in?
Are you asking about preschool?
Pre-kindergarten.
No, the pre-kindergarten program that'll be starting this fall at Blackman.
I'm not certain exactly which classroom you're speaking of. If you're speaking of kindergarten readiness classroom, those students automatically grow over into a kindergarten classroom. So even to answer your question further about what do we do with the kindergarten students that go to the developmental or kindergarten readiness classroom, those students, there are students here this year that are going next year, so we're really not losing numbers. We're just sort of planting last year's crop of students that were there for this year's crop. Does that make sense to you?
It's just, I was zoned initially for Blackman Elementary and it's a, I mean, even to the campus, when you walk onto the campus, there's just a difference between the two schools on the way they're built, the way it's maintained. I understand what everybody is saying, but the only thing that I've heard about Blackman is, I mean, about Rockville, is they're good in their special needs program and my child doesn't need, have any special needs at all, so.
They're level five. I'm sorry. I quickly looked at all the scores, the two thousand thirteen scores that are there for being seen that they're barred open from public. Rockville outperformed Blackman, broke class this past week.
That's because of the zoning?
I'm saying Rockville outperformed broke in Blackman.
You're talking about as far as tests?
Yes, ma'am.
In which areas?
In all areas, in fourth and fifth grade.
And you meaning the scores that are about to be released in about a week?
About a week. I can't give you the score, but I can say.
You're saying across the board?
Ninety percent across the board, yes. At broke class, the value add.
And Ms. Johnson's home was rezoned as part of the Stewart's Creek rezoning several years ago. This is not the most recent rezoning. When Stewart's Creek opened up, there was some rezoning and when Rockville Middle School opened up, there was some rezoning back to Rockville from that area because we removed grade six, seven and eight from Rockville Elementary and moved them into the middle school. That's when the rezoning happened to your address. Just want to mention that, please.
Mr. Holliday?
Mr. Odom, at what grade level do we start identifying students for the Spectrum program?
Some of them before school, basically if they do, but typically we like for them to be kindergarten to first grade, you know, because just to be able to identify.
It's really not applicable to a question of zoning, but we don't often think of special education as not only those that may be challenged by the curriculum, but those that are excelling and going beyond the curriculum as well. And the same type of emphasis and outstanding performance that you've heard of at Rockville in the special education program can also be there for a student that is identified in our Spectrum program, maybe a little bit ahead of their grade level. And it may be that your child with the maturity that you've documented here and the preparedness and your commitment as a parent, may be an outstanding candidate for the Spectrum program and you may find an opportunity that is just outstanding. Again, I echo my fellow board members, it is unfortunate and it has been a challenge for probably twelve months or more to this board, how can we deal with the overcrowding at Blackman Elementary? Unfortunately, this is a situation where adding additional students to Blackman Elementary is just not something that I can support.
The reason you hear about the special education program at Rockville Elementary, it is one of our designated schools that receives the hearing impaired students. So it has a special addition to it for students that we actually transport kids there that have more serious hearing impairments with teachers, they have a little different playground and other activities for them there. So as far as the other special education, it would be just like many of our other schools would, except that school happens to be a site for the students that have more serious hearing impairments and we do cluster those together some there. So they have a few more, which is because of our decision to place them there.
Does that, with that being said, does that affect the environment of the school at all?
Not particularly, you know. Really, when you get into special education, when you get into speech and hearing and that sort of thing, a public school actually begins picking up students at three years of age. So even some of those students that have the more serious, might be younger than even a kindergarten age, but that's a federal requirement. But no, because typically those students are supervised more heavily by teachers and educational assistants and other things that's associated with that. They're lovely children. It's really good to see them achieve. It's just, they have one of our first padded playgrounds, if you remember that, and lots of things done, special equipment for them to use with that. So it's really nice kids. And I know the faculty of the people at Rockville, you'll really, you'll really love them when you get a chance to meet them, if you had a chance to kind of sit down and talk with them. That school was overcrowded a few years ago. We actually had to move kids away from that. We had so many portables there, we had to make an adjustment there.
And I think that Mr. Johnson has the most experience of any principal in the county right now.
He probably does.
Mr., I think Mr. Zagor talked about that.
Anybody else? Ms. Michaelis, a few, we've got a motion, we've got a second. If you don't mind, read the motion again, please.
The motion is to deny the request of Mrs. Johnson for her child to go to Blackman Elementary.
All right, I'll repeat it. We've got, we've got the motion by Mr. Blair and a second by Mr. Holliday. We did comments and discussion already, so all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you for coming, Ms. Johnson. Number fourteen, Mr. Odom.
And we'll ask Ms. McLeod to step up just a minute. This is an evaluation grievance appeal to the board. Lenora Washington has appealed the step one and step two evaluation grievance findings. Pursuant to state rules and regulations, the step three appeal is to the Board of Education. The board has been provided with Ms. Washington's request for an appeal and all information submitted at step one and step two. After reviewing the record, the board may, and I'll let you explain the options to them, Ms. McLeod.
This is the first time you've seen one of these on the board agenda. Just to explain, it's very similar to a student discipline appeal. So your job at this stage is to just review the record that's been presented before you to decide whether to grant an additional hearing where there may be additional evidence presented or to, based on what is in that record, affirm or overturn the decision at step one and step two.
Mr. Chairman, after reading all the pertinent information, I move that we affirm the decision of Director of Schools.
My second.
We got a motion by Mr. Blair and a second by Mr. Nipper. Any further comments on this? Mr. Taggert?
I would just like to affirm to all in attendance and all listening in that we've had this information for a while. It's not just been handed to us this evening, so we've had this to review. And so the fact that we're not shuffling through pages and so forth, please don't take that to mean we don't have any empathy or have not been enlightened in the situation we've had this information to look through.
Anybody else? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number fifteen, Mr. Odom, we, you read that the other night and I'm going to ask you to read it again tonight for anybody listening.
Mr. Snell is with us tonight, if you want to ask some additional questions and that. So this is a report for information from our Transportation Department. The Transportation Department ended the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen school year transporting a total of twenty-five thousand two hundred and seventy-eight Rutherford County students. Five hundred and ninety-one of them were special education students and twenty-four thousand six hundred and eighty-seven were regular education students compared to two thousand eleven, twelve, when we transported a total of twenty-four thousand seven hundred and eighty-three students, which is a two percent increase. We also transported two hundred and four Atlas students, that's academic time leads to achieving students, Rutherford County Schools Assistance Program for Families in Transition in two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen versus one hundred and ninety-five in two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, or a four point five percent increase. We currently have two hundred and twenty-eight buses under contract. Thirty-two of them are special education buses and one hundred and ninety-six are transit buses. All buses are inspected annually by the State of Tennessee Department of Safety and a sticker denoting compliance is attached to each bus. The district owns twenty-nine activity buses, which are also inspected by the State of Tennessee. That's your high school buses typically, teen buses and all. We have two hundred and forty-two regular bus drivers and ninety substitute bus drivers. There are ninety other school district employees who hold a valid certified driver's license, CDL. This equates to four hundred and twenty-two drivers that must be monitored for drug testing and Department of Transportation physical requirements. For the school year two thousand twelve, thirteen, we had two personal injury accidents and twenty-two property damage accidents for a total of twenty-four accidents compared to two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, when we had five personal injury accidents and thirty-six property damage accidents for a total of forty-one or forty-one point five percent decrease. Mr. Snell, did you tell me at one time how many miles we drive in a year? There was a number you threw out. It was, it was a, yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Not counting the zillion of stops.
Ms. Snell, I guess, what do you attribute the drop in the property damage to this year?
Well, I think a lot of it has to do with training, that the driver can save week, the old in-service training every year. It's just before school starts, all over many factors in regards to safety aspects that you're involved with. And I think it's the quality of people, the screening process of looking at more vehicle reports, how many accidents they've had before, speeding tickets, monitoring that and the last contract we put in there with regards to the number of accidents that they're allowed to have before we possibly could bring them to the board for just their action. We require them to provide us with any speeding tickets or any moving violation tickets so we're able to keep up with that information. I think it's just a more, a better monitoring situation.
Anybody else? Mr. Young?
That's a lot of miles, a lot of hours behind the wheel, so that's a very good job. Appreciate your efforts.
Smyrna High softball coach told me tonight, said, "You don't get to come much." He says, "Oh, I get to come for the CDL training all the time. I've been here several times."
Anybody else? Thank you, Ms. Snell. Number sixteen, general discussion. I'll just make a couple of comments or a couple of dates here. Reminder, on the twenty-sixth, we've got summer school graduation, six o'clock at Riverdale. I believe Ms. Blankenship is going to be our speaker, correct?
Yes.
All right. August the fourth, Stewart's Creek Open House, two o'clock.
Correct. Ribbon cutting one forty-five.
I'm sorry?
Ribbon cutting at one forty-five.
Okay. Mr. Blair is going to be our speaker that day, I believe. All right, any others? Discussion. All minds at ease. Good, Mr. Taggert?
Right.
We're adjourned.